Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, October the 3rd, 2022 work session. I will call the meeting to order and ask that all are here to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will also welcome our audience that's joining us live stream. Board members, we will begin with 3.01, which is setting the agenda. And I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to remove 5.04, which is our speaker for the night, and to add 6.03, which will be for the delegates selection and to be approved for the annual conference. May I have a motion? For... Thank you, Ms. Adcock.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We will move to 4.01. And board members, we had had a little bit of discussion about a mondo track presentation. We didn't make it to the agenda, but I thought I'd add it to the board chair comments. And then we have Ms. Donna Carpenter here with us tonight with the CVB. She's going to actually do that. And then if y'all would like to have it added for our business meeting, we can do that. So Ms. Carpenter, I will ask for you to step to the podium, please. And then guys, if you can get that presentation ready for her. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you so much for entertaining.
Will you key up?
Oh.
Yep.
Which one?
Either one.
Oh, okay.
Just press the button? Yep.
There we go.
You are ready.
Make me all nervous, all in the beginning. Thank you so much for entertaining our presentation this evening. And I have with us our Senior VP of Sales and Services, Mr. John Poole. And as Holly and I discussed, we have been looking at, as well as our board has been looking at, opportunities for us to potentially partner on other projects. The turf field project has been highly successful at the three high schools. And so, looking at what else can we do? And we came up with a potential mondo track. And in talking with Ms. Grimsley, we looked at the three high schools that we were working with previously. And as we all know, we look at these schools more as a tourism asset, where you all look at them from an educational component. So, we can only spend our dollars on tourism-related items. And we are funded by occupancy tax dollars, which the visitor pays. There's no local residents paying the occupancy tax unless you're staying in the hotel. But that's another story. So, what we would propose, and we proposed this to our Board of Directors, if you could take me to the next slide. Some people may ask, what is a mondo track? Well, it is a synthetic track surface used for track and field athletics. There are very few of them in our area. You can keep going if you'd like. Next slide, there you go. Here's a picture of a mondo track. It looks very similar in shape and size of a regular track, other than there are two starting blocks for wind direction. So if the wind is blowing one way, the athletes have to be able to run in the opposite direction. And track surface can be the school color, so you can change those up. Next slide, please. The mondo tracks in North Carolina are few. You can see here Johnson C. Smith University and C.A&amp;T in Greensboro, JDL Fast Track, which is an indoor track in Winston-Salem, and Lenore Ryan University. So, none of these are high school. This would be the first high school mondo track if we proceed with this project. Next slide. Here are a list of opportunities. And again, this is what we presented to our Board of Directors. And these are the questions that they had asked us after we first initially talked to them about what groups could we host in Cabarrus County on a mondo track? Excuse me. And here's just a list of a few. And the majority of these, when we look at things, and whether it's potential for hospitality and tourism, we look at room nights. And each of these events, this is a low number, but the potential for room nights per event is between 500 and 800. Next slide. And economic impact, you can kind of see... I'm going to turn this over to John and let him talk a little bit more about economic impact.
One of the things that was really cool about this research was finding out the economic impact that a group can bring. I couldn't find current data. Unfortunately, they're still gathering the data for me, and they didn't have it for this presentation. So if you look back, even at 2004, 2005, the events that were happening, and these are small events, as you'll see, of 450 people attending, still generating around $200,000 per event. When you get down into the larger ones where there's 8,000 people attending, that's 3,000 or 3,500,000. And it's incredible to see that kind of economic impact. So, what that means is more hotel rooms, more gas, more dinners, all in Cabarrus County. And that's really what we want.
Next slide. And then you may ask, what are the benefits to the school system? Upgraded facilities at the schools, for sure. When we were looking at which school we would do this at, if it comes to fruition, those three high schools, out of the three, Cox Mill, West Cabarrus, and Robinson High School, our event rights holders really gravitate to J.M. Robinson. The parking lot and the way it's arranged out there is an ideal location to put on a larger event. Parking is perfect there. So with that said, also, it has the oldest track of any of the schools, of the three schools that we were talking about. So that's why we kind of landed on that one. So it would be an upgraded facility at the school. The students, your student athletes, would have an opportunity to compete on an Olympic-level track. The revenue generation from local track and field events, anything that doesn't come through the CVB, would be in, you know, school events, school, local school things that would have to pay to utilize that track would go back directly to the school system. And increased revenue from concessions. So, those are just to name a few. I'm sure there's some others, but... So, and what's the next slide? So, here's the big slide everybody wants to know. Build out for a mondo track is actually pretty quick. Between 10 and 12 weeks, they can put in a brand-new mondo track. And we reached out to Brian Cone several months ago. And his quote that came back was about a million dollars to build this. We have bumped that up just a bit to give a little wiggle room of an approximate 1.5 million in case there are other issues that were to arise. And they didn't actually look at this field, so a million dollars was just a basic installation. So, that's approximately what it is. And the CVB Board asked me to come here and see if the school would be interested in a partnership to help pay for the cost of this mondo track. And we just appreciate your consideration and conversation if you have any questions.
Okay. Excuse me. Board members, we can do a couple different things. We can go ahead and authorize Dr. Kapiki to speak with Ms. Herndon and maybe take this to the county with Mike Downs, who actually sits on the CVB Board, and have some conversation to include maybe our athletic liaison, Ms. Fur, and Brian Cone, and anybody else that y'all think would be a good person to have as part of the conversation. Or we can add it to the meeting for next Monday night and have further discussion before we make a decision. So I will let y'all make a decision, and I'll start with Ms. Sandage.
So, does that mean I get to ask a question?
You do.
Okay. So what does a partnership look like?
A financial partnership. So, the CVB cannot borrow money. We are a nonprofit organization, and we are not allowed to borrow money. So when we did the turf fields, our partnership was with the county. And the county actually borrowed the money to pay for that. And then the CVB pays that money back to the county through the occupancy tax.
So it would be like borrowing some money right now?
You wouldn't have to borrow money. We actually have some money on hand that we are willing to spend and put forward for this project. So no money on our end would have to be borrowed.
Okay. But it would be money on our end? Is that what I understand? I just want to understand the process.
I don't know how you all, where the money on your end would come from.
Okay.
That can come from a partnership with the county. It could come from a partnership with the city.
So yeah, I would be interested in hearing further discussion with Dr. Kapiki and our CFL.
Perfect. That's what I would recommend, is them to go ahead and have the conversation and bring us a recommendation back to the board. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this proposal to us. It sounds pretty exciting. I also want to thank you for your work with our Academy of Hospitality and Tourism. That's a big deal in our county, for our schools and our kids, and I appreciate your partnership with that, too. I think if you have people coming, do we have to worry about the fieldhouse issue? I mean, is there, we don't have to do anything with the fieldhouse that's over there that increases the size of that, or...
Not that I'm aware of.
That would really be, right at this point, all I have other than what was just said. So I'm supportive of that as well.
Mr. Fur?
I don't have any questions now, and I'll be happy to get with Dr. Kapiki later and have a discussion.
Ms. Blackwell?
Same. I'm good to let them discuss it and bring us more information.
Ms. Carpenter?
I think it'd be great to have the discussion. Now, do we have anything at all, and this can be included in the discussion, whether we have anything in the budget? Have we put anything? Have we did any kind of improvements at all in that, you know, for that school? I'd like to know that. I know we've done some things. And I'd like to know what we've done, if we've got any money. Those type of questions I'd like to have within the discussion, what we've done. And again, if anything's been budgeted, what amounts have already been budgeted. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming and presenting this to us. It's really exciting. I don't know what a mondo track is, but I'm guessing it's something really cool. So yeah, I would be glad to get the recommendations from Dr. Kapiki and have further discussion about this.
Okay. So Dr. Kapiki, if you, Carol, Tim Fur, Brian Cone, and Brian Tyson will have your discussion and just bring a recommendation back to the board. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
Madam Chair, I ask for a point of privilege, please.
Absolutely.
All right. As a current board member and candidate running for what I hope to be my second term on the Board of Education, I have had opportunities to make my voice and opinions be heard. I've done podcasts, and I've talked about my opinions on transgender bathrooms, and most recently, The War Room, about books that I believe are inappropriate for our children and parents need to be aware of. When I do these, I want to be clear, and I promised the board that I would be clear, that these opinions are mine and mine alone. I take every caution in interviews to use the terms "I" and "me." My words and opinions do not reflect those opinions of the entire board. If my honesty and transparency does not align with your family values and beliefs, that is okay. It is my responsibility to make sure that people know where I stand and what they can expect from me.
Okay. So we appreciate your point of privileged time. And you know that there's been some discussions surrounding some of your media. I guess the podcast was the main concern. So I'm just going to give the board members an opportunity to address anything that they would like to discuss involving that issue right now. And I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
Okay. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I want to first to say that, you know, we as a board have to be a board of integrity. And every person on this board was elected by the Cabarrus community to represent all the students, the team that we have in front of us, our parents, our teachers, the whole, everything. And I think that the board's authority comes from us as a whole. We vote on things in our meetings on important topics. And no one board member has the authority to make those choices. It's us as a board. The thing that I think bothers me the most is the lack of integrity that was shown in the September 29th interview that you had. He introduces you as the vice chair of the Cabarrus County School Board, and at no time did you acknowledge that you were a candidate running for reelection. You also made specific comments that you were the chair of the committee that involves me and Mrs. Carpenter. And we actually did make a vote on you reading that book that night. I know that you specifically said that you took it upon yourself, you felt that it was your task to read that book. But that book would not have been read if this board had not voted for that book to be read, and by majority. I just believe that you have really gone past policy 2220 that says that only the board chair has the ability to be the official spokesperson of the school board. And even though you do have your personal comments, this policy says that any person speaking in an official capacity will conduct his or her assignment from the standpoint of the best interest of the board, the school district, and the community, not as a representative of his or her own personal ideas or feelings. In addition, the superintendent and other school employees who are called to speak in their official capacities and employees of the school system shall communicate the position of the school board when asked to comment on legislative policy and political issues.
Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And again, on the, this particular podcast, I did listen to it also. And I never once heard you say that this is my opinion. And again, the moderator of that, they did announce that you were the vice chair of the Board of Education. At that point, you could have corrected the gentleman and told him that you were speaking on your behalf and not on the behalf of this board. Perception is a big thing, and people will perceive that you were speaking for this board. Being the vice chair of this board is a big responsibility. And it that, when you take on that role, it does carry a heavy responsibility. And this is not the first time this has happened. There's been at least two other, two other times that this has happened. And again, during that whole interview, I didn't hear one time. And I'm not saying that we, there's a lot of us that feel that this material has gotten into our schools, and we don't want it in our schools. I think we all agree with that. We do not want this type of material in our system. And we're not saying that that's, that this is, that this is something we want. But when someone speaks, we want to make sure that it is fully understood that it is that person that is speaking. And I, too, am running, but you don't see me out doing that. So we have to be very, very careful when we do that. So again, I listened, and I didn't hear that word that, and it wasn't understood on that podcast that that was the case. So I'm very disappointed. And again, when I heard that podcast, that was not the impression that I got.
Mr. Fur?
Well, I also listened to the podcast, and you know, we're seven individuals with seven different opinions. You know, I, and I don't think, I'm not speaking for the attorneys, but they haven't reached out to me, and I don't know any rest of you to say anything was wrong with what she did. So if there was nothing wrong, then, you know, I back her. I always have. And I think she knows that, and she can rest assured that going forward, I've got her back. And I didn't see anything wrong. I mean, I know we've had discussions before, and people on the board has told us that, you know, we're not going to tell them what to say. And if, and if, that's okay. As long as they can accept the consequences and deal with it, and like she just did earlier, then I'm good. So, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
I guess for the audience, if you didn't know, is it rumble.com? Is that what the podcast was? So anyway?
I'm not even sure.
That's what it was sent to, sent us. It's a rumble.com. It's what, a five or 10-minute interview with somebody? I mean, I listened to it as well, but I thought that you did exactly use the word "I" and "me" quite often, and you gave your campaign email address as far as a contact. So it seemed pretty clear that it was, it was your opinion. But there, I guess there is some confusion, there can be some confusion. I think you tried to clear that up tonight, and I appreciate you making those statements.
Ms. Sandage?
Well, I've got a lot to say, because I, too, said in this type of discussion several months ago where there was an attempt to censor me based off of my personal opinion. And the discussion was around what I said on my page in my personal capacity. And I even referred to myself as a parent, and that was the reason why I was concerned. There was a discussion about, from us all. And we had an opportunity to share what our concerns were with what I did. And three board members felt like I violated policy 2220. Did I say that correctly? And there was also an attempt to censor me by the individual who was saying that they didn't do the exact same thing. So that just brings a little bit of concern. And it also has brought, brought stress to this board. And that's exactly what is explained in that policy. Stress to the board by confusing the public, stress to the board by continually bringing up a topic that is very difficult to discuss by many people, that also brought several folks to our comment section last board meeting in concern. And that we've already identified how we take care of the discussions around literature and supplemental material. And I think, not I think, we decided upon that as a board, and it happened in our literature and supplemental material meeting during their last meeting. So it should have been left there, in my opinion. That's all I have to say there.
Thank you. Would you like to make any additional comment? Yes?
Well, it was brought up. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind hearing from our attorneys. I mean, if they think it's fine.
I was going to do that next. I just wanted to make sure no one else had anything else. Ms. Blackwell?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'll wait.
You go ahead.
I have a question for the attorneys as well, if I may. I'll wait till they come up.
Yes.
And I just need some help figuring out how we do this. There was a discussion that we had during closed session that was in relation to what we are discussing right now. How do we discuss that in open session or bring those, those comments and that discussion to open session? Because it was not in relation to a personnel matter.
I think that what I would say is, at this point in time, I don't know what the conversation's going to be. And I do believe it's a closed session matter. And then after the closed session matter, if the board wants to discuss it openly in an open session matter, we can do that. But I would like to at least advise you, as to whatever y'all are thinking in a closed session, and then you can take my advice or not take my advice, but I believe with legal advice, I would like to wait and do that in closed session.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you good with us adding this to closed session tonight, just like we did before? Closed session and it was taken to open session?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Board members, that's exactly what we'll do tonight. Everyone good with that? Will you unkey, please? Everyone good? Okay. All right. With that, we will move on. We appreciate your comments, Ms. Blackwell. And I would like to say thank you to the SRO that is here with us tonight. I think he's in the back. Thank you. We appreciate you being with us. And I will move to 4.02 and turn it over to Dr. Kapiki for the superintendent comment.
Thank you, Ms. Grimsley. This evening, we have several updates for the board from our cabinet folks to give you some clarity as to some of the personnel situations that we have in terms of substitutes, our transportation department. Our HR department's here to give you an update, too, on the situation with our staff and things of that nature, as we talked about in the previous meeting. So I'm going to hand it over to them. We also have an update, too, from our chief academic officer and some of the issues concerning some of our learning loss and some other things of our professional development, how we're dealing with that, too, this evening. So they will speak to you briefly, and then I have a few comments I'd like to just talk to. So the first one up this evening is going to be Dr. Williams from our Human Resources Department. Dr. Williams?
Good evening. How are you guys? All right. So just a quick staffing update on where we are. At your request, we made sure that our frontline applicant system has been cleaned up. So our specialists worked back through all of those postings to make sure that anything that had been filled was closed. So with the frontline applicant system that you guys can access on the Cabarrus County Schools page is currently accurate. Just a really quick rundown. At present, we have seven full-time elementary positions that are open, eight middle school positions, but one of those went in progress today. So actually, seven, once that one is taken care of. Thirteen in high school currently. Four CTE teachers, so that's all of our licensed staff. So seven, eight, and 13. Let's see. Support staff, we are looking for 17 ECTAs and 18 teacher assistants. We need 12 custodians. And then transportation came up last week, so I want to kind of clarify. I had some conversations with Mr. Whitaker. When you look at the transportation list, it looks like there's about 90 bus, last week, about 90, 95 bus driver positions that were open. Good number of those, however, are substitute drivers, field trip drivers, those types of things. So we had, we resorted those so that they're a little cleaner and frontline to make sure that those numbers are more accurate. So at present, we have 65 bus driver openings that we could fill based on our funding. According to Mr. Whitaker today, 40 is about what he needs. So we're going to leave the 65 open, knowing that realistically, we have never, you're never going to really get to that 100% fill rate with bus drivers. If we were to get to the 65, what you would be looking at is probably reducing the number of kids that are on a bus, right? But to cover the number of routes that we have, it's 40. And then in terms of child nutrition, 24 openings for child nutrition. And then there was a question about subs. Dr. Kapiki brought it up, so I do want to give you a little update. We are currently cleaning up our sub list. So Amber Hartzell, who's our specialist who handles subs, is working through that list right now, taking a look at folks that haven't subbed in the last 12 months. So she ran a report today, actually, is going to begin working through contacting those folks. We left them on. We didn't clean, this normally gets cleaned up about once a year. We waited through COVID because we knew that we had quite a few folks that would not take sub positions during COVID that we anticipated would come back. And what we didn't want to do was terminate them and end their employment with the school system and force them to go all the way back through the hiring process. So we held on that until October. She is working on that now. We have 597 people who are currently hired as subs. We obviously know 597 people are not currently subbing. We sent an email out on Friday asking those folks to, if you haven't subbed in the last 12 months, to confirm with us whether you want to stay on the list or whether you are coming off. And so we're beginning to get those responses. And so I anticipate in the next two weeks or so, that that list of the active subs will get cleaned up, making sure that we don't delete anyone who wants to continue subbing. In terms of the hires on that, we've had 178 applicants since August 23rd. Obviously, all 178 of those do not necessarily make it all the way through the hiring process. What I can tell you is that we have, we hired 31 so far in September. We had nine on-the-board docs for you in August, so 40. And then I signed five more sheets today. So those numbers are continuing to rise. We had 14 that are currently in the process, working their way through it. So the sub numbers are rising. We have been reaching out via email to folks who apply. Amber texts them every day, and they get an immediate response when they apply to be a substitute. There's also a question, we wanted to give you an update about recruitment. So just in terms of our teachers, we do have, again, those openings that I mentioned earlier. We are actively recruiting. So we have four schools, four universities that we have fall recruitment visits at. And we have some teams of teachers that are going out. Angie went to UNC Charlotte for us a couple of weeks ago with Natalia to recruit at UNC Charlotte. We had a very big turnout at UNCC and lots of information coming back. We are using... We are using teams of teacher leaders to go and do those visits as we are able to get them to be able to go. So, the UNC Charlotte Fair was a big success. We also have student teachers. So, we got the list from UNCC. Of those, the larger list, forty-two of those student teachers are in Cabarrus County schools. And so, we are going to begin our interview process of those folks coming up shortly. And of those forty-two, nine colleges are represented. So, we have nine universities for forty-two teachers in the fall. That number will probably double for the spring semester. We have significantly more student teachers in the spring, but we will be hiring from that pool of forty-two. Dr. Bish has worked to get a letter for contingent hires. So, our principals are beginning to interview those student teachers now for openings that we currently have. They're eligible to take positions in early December. So, they'll finish their student teaching up. They'll be able to actually move into some positions just before they graduate. So, we'll do some contingent hires for them. And then Leslie Griffin is actively reaching out via a platform called Handshake that connects us with college students all over the country. And so, she is, for each of our positions, is sending out on Handshake. In terms of our classified staff, we are scheduling our fall job fairs, and so those will be, you'll see those start to pop up in the advertisements, begin for those shortly for transportation, child nutrition, and facilities. And then Phil Farr has been very, very helpful. We are looking at some advertising on Spectrum. And so, News 14, some of the districts around us have started doing some of that work. And so, Phil has done a great job, he and his team, of doing some of the early work. But we do anticipate that we will be putting some funds towards some advertising on Spectrum and News 14, as other districts have. And those districts are telling us that, once they did so, the numbers began to rise. So, that is my update for you, what questions might I be able to answer.
Thank you, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
So, a few things. You said we have seventeen ECTA positions open? Those are not EC teachers?
Not EC teachers.
Okay.
I'll pull the EC numbers for you. I should have grabbed those, and I didn't write those down. I apologize.
Okay. I really would like to see what that is. Okay. The other thing is about the bus drivers. So, when Art Caiman presented to us last month, he talked about having twenty-five applicants that he was reviewing, and I didn't get an update as to where, or we didn't get an update, I don't know, I didn't get one, as to where those applications are in process.
I'll get that for you. I did not check that yet, but I can pull that for you.
Okay. My concern is that, you know, I was canvassing this weekend. I found out I have a bus driver as a neighbor, and our bus drivers are struggling, literally. I know a lot of our staff are struggling, but we really haven't been talking about the need of bus drivers at this point and what we're doing to get them. So, I don't know. Who needs to answer that? I don't know if this board may need to have a discussion about that, as to what we need to do or implement. But like, for example, I asked Art last month if we are giving a stipend or something for those extra routes. If we don't have staff in these positions, those salaries should be used to go to those other staff. Like, we should have zero on those salaries because our staff, our bus drivers, are struggling. So, I don't know if that discussion needs to happen here, but tonight, before we leave, we should have some guidance to give so that we don't lose bus drivers. I am truly concerned about that. I'm also truly concerned about these EC numbers. So, I would really like some answers on that.
I'll take care of that. I'll get the EC, and then...
I don't even know if I asked the question, but I just want you to hear me saying that this, for me, it's scary, and we don't have answers. We are not discussing it, and we should be.
Understood.
So, we get those in Personnel Update, you know, usually in closed session. And we actually do that on business meeting nights. I just added this tonight, but we will get that for the business meeting. But are you saying you want us to discuss it tonight? Me add it to the closed session for Personnel tonight?
That would be great. I'm talking about, we said we had twenty-five people in process. I didn't see any of those come through to us. So, my question, and I sent an email, is where are they now? Are we gonna, because if we only need forty bus drivers, I can assume that twenty-five is gonna help a whole heck of a lot. But if they are not in process and they're not concluded upon, or we don't know when that's gonna happen, we don't know when there'll be some relief to the bus drivers that are truly struggling.
Right. So, I feel like that's a conversation that you need to have with Art, for sure, that couldn't be here tonight, and probably include Carol as well, that we usually get that update for the business meeting. But maybe y'all can have that conversation, and we can talk a little bit more about it in closed session tonight.
Of course.
Okay? All right. Mr. Walter? Well, Dr. Kapiki, would you like to respond?
I think, I don't think, I know there's a lot of ways to look at this. And then, Mr. O'Grane, do you have anything to offer on this that I'm missing in terms of facts or numbers that Mr. Whitaker had an emergency to deal with? One thing I want to say, and I'll be clear about this, to the board and to our public, we all realize that there are significant challenges, especially in terms of salary and pay. But we also have to realize, none of the board understands, is there is only X amount of dollars to go around where we can pay things. Part of the problem, it's one piece of the puzzle, there are many, is that we are dealing with competitive counties around us that may be paying more, may be paying less. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the average mean hourly wage for a bus driver is eighteen dollars and sixty-three cents. So, we are competitive in terms of paying that wage according to the current average in the country. We're not underpaying, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to any of our bus drivers because they're, you know, the bottom line there is, you know, you want to pay them as much as you possibly can, but there's only X amount of dollars. And if you continue to raise or give more to one group, you have another group that's gonna be coming up and asking the same question. So, it's a challenge, is what I'm saying. But there are budget constraints that we're dealing with. In terms of recruiting and retaining, I will say this. I was out at the Transportation Office myself twice last week. They are doing everything they can. They are posting it, they're advertising it, they're seeking everyone they can through various means. Art and his team are doing a fantastic job in terms of trying to recruit people. The bottom line is, it's not a crisis in Cabarrus County. It is a nationwide crisis for every school district in the country in terms of having bus drivers fully staffed and fully employed. When I talked with Art, I believe he told me, and please don't quote me this, but I want to say it was 2018, he said it was the last time he was fully staffed, which was four years ago. Then COVID hit, and COVID, whether we want to face that fact or not, it's changed the work environment for all of us across the board. And we have not fully recovered from it. And that's the bottom line. The economy is also an issue that we're dealing with. People are trying to make ends meet, and as a school system and under the budget restraints and requirements that we have, again, we're trying to make sure that we are maintaining our financial responsibilities in terms of how we're paying people. But I, it is not, and to your point to the twenty-five, I'd have to go back and look at that. It's a good point you make, Ms. Sandage. I'd have to go back and talk with Art to get the actual facts on that, and maybe Mr. O'Grane can shed some light on some of that. But I know, for instance, I know this last few weeks, we've hired four bus drivers, and in the same breath, four left. So, it's almost like you're chasing your tail. You get caught up, or you start making progress, and then, you know, for whatever reason, you lose some. But it's not for lack of effort or lack of trying. I just think there are just a lot of things going on that are impacting employment across the board. Same thing with our teachers, and we could talk about that later tonight. But we are actively recruiting, and Dr. Williams and Dr. Bish and his team have done a phenomenal job. When I talk to my colleagues across this state and across the country in terms of teacher shortage, whether we want to see it or not, for what it is, we are short, and we are actively recruiting teachers. But I will tell you, we are in a much better position than other folks that are in way, much more dire straits than we are in terms of teachers. Also, I don't want to be remiss, because the current teaching staff that we have, and I know the board has acknowledged this and continues to recognize it, has done a phenomenal job in providing a great education for our kids. And they continue to do it without complaint, and I appreciate all the teachers and the teachers' assistants that continue to step up to the plate and provide an outstanding education for our kids. So, these are challenges that exist, and they're real. And what I can say is, I see every day our people working very hard to try and solve a problem that is just, it just has not lessened or gone away, and we continue to try and meet that challenge head-on. And we are open for suggestions. We are open for ideas. We are open for anything anyone who wants to bring to the table to discuss, to help us lessen our need. But it is not for lack of an effort. And when I look, again, when I look at the wage, the board has addressed it and has addressed the wage, has increased the wage, has handed out bonuses, has done those financial things necessary to try and keep what we have and encourage more to apply. You make a good suggestion, Ms. Sandage, in terms of some, possibly, some of the unused funds that we might be able to use to maybe reward some of the folks out there. But again, that's gonna take some homework by our finance department. Now, again, I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, because I really don't know those financial details until I look into them. But I'll just close by saying, I know in terms of, when I look at the numbers across the country and then I look at ours, from where we are on a standpoint of what we're doing, we're making ground. It's just a very difficult thing to overcome. I mean, forty's a large number, and to be able to address, to be able to address the transportation needs that we have and still pick up kids, and we, look, we, first month is always tough, and we certainly had our share of errors and omissions and mistakes this first month of school that we're continuing to address. But as soon as those are brought to our attention, we address them immediately. And I think that our Transportation Department has done a really good job. And I'll end there. And again, I'm not disputing anything you're saying. I'm just trying to put some perspective on it to say, we continue to talk about this problem, and we hear you, and we talk about it every day. And Dr. Williams could tell you, I'm down there every day asking questions. How many do we hire? How many do we have? Do we talk to Art? Do we do this recruitment? Where are people this week? So, we are on top of it. It's just a very difficult situation right now. And again, I think it's just, there's a lot of factors playing into it. Mr. O'Grane, anything to add to that that I may have missed?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Kapiki. The twenty-five that I think keeps getting referred to here is, last time Art was up here, he said that he sent twenty-three applicants forward to be screened to go to the bus class. And he did do that. The twenty-three went forward, and at this point, we have eight applicants signed up for the virtual bus class. Out of that, four, in addition to that, four drivers started last week and were put strategically at our new middle school and our biggest high school and biggest elementary school, which were our highest-needs areas. And he's, the Transportation Department has signed three hiring sheets today, and they will go to the other parts of the county that are in need. So, although it's not anywhere near the forty, progress, gradual progress is being made. And I will echo what Dr. Kapiki said. I'm over at the Transportation Office a good bit myself, talking to Art, talking to April Kobel, who's our HR person over there, and they're doing everything under the sun to beat the bushes and try to find people to join our team. And I commend their efforts. It's an uphill struggle, but they are finding people. They are trying to push them through. HR, of course, does screening, and sometimes the applicants go through, sometimes they don't. And when that happens, we have to find another applicant to push through. In addition to that, we have some of our bus drivers, as soon as we hire one, sometimes we have one that resigns. And so, it's almost like a rotation. I will say, we are hiring more than are resigning, thankfully. But, and I don't think they're resigning due to, they're not resigning in droves. I don't want to give off that impression. But when you're only hiring one or two at a time by natural attrition, one or two are going off, you know, when you have two-hundred-and-forty bus drivers. So, that's kind of where we are right now. I do want to point out, as far as the equipment, as far as the buses, our mechanics have done a tremendous job. We're having very little calls as far as the, you know, buses having mechanical issues, breaking down on the side of the road, not starting at bus stops or at schools to take kids to and from school. So, I do want to give a big shout-out to our mechanics that work so hard back at the bus garage to make sure that when those buses do get out on the road, that they're performing, and they're very reliable. And I do also want to say, you know, to our bus drivers that are out there, that work for our district, we're very, very thankful for the hard work that they have put in this past month. An unbelievable group of people, good people, hard-working people that are committed to our children. And to see the love that they give to our kids each and every day, even though they may have been on their third run of the day, they treat every single group that gets on there like it's the first group of the day. And I've witnessed that myself. And I do want to thank our bus drivers for their commitment and their dedication to our kids and our schools. The last thing I want to say, and I want to, to anybody listening that knows of a bus driver and or wants to join our team themselves, you can very easily call 704-260-5500 tomorrow morning, and we will be happy to walk you through the process and get you into our application system and on our team, hopefully, and as quickly as possible. So, we're also exploring other options that Dr. Williams talked about just a minute ago, trying to get creative, trying to, you know, if we had forty more bus drivers, all of this would go away. And believe me, Art would be happy, I would be happy, the parents would be happy, the bus drivers would be happy. So, that's a win for everybody, and that's what we're gonna continue to strive to do. But that's what I have to report right now. Again, Art wasn't able to join us tonight. He had planned on being here, had an emergency come up, but he wanted to send along that, these were some of the notes that he wanted me to pass to you guys as well.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grane.
Ms. Sandage.
So, please don't hear me saying that I am discrediting anything that anybody is doing. I truly feel we're doing as much as we can do. I'm just telling you guys, I literally had a, my husband and I, had a thirty-minute conversation with one of our bus drivers. So, I am telling you what I learned in that conversation. If there's any way to support, if we're hiring, we need to be retention, we need to be focused on both of those at the same time. That is what I'm saying. Talk to our bus drivers. We may already be doing that, but I'm sure the conversation that this bus driver had with me, he ain't have it with everybody else. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to take a whole lot of time, but it is obviously a very complicated situation. And we do, obviously, have a three-tier bus system, so that's adding hours for some folks. It makes it more attractive. We do offer benefits for the position as well. So, there is some good, do we have a recruiting bonus if somebody finds...
There is a signing bonus.
For the person that finds somebody, recommends them, and they stay? Shall they get a bonus?
We don't have that for, I guess, a referral bonus. We haven't done that.
Maybe we should think of something like that with a $500 bonus.
Rob, let me interrupt you for just a second. That's something that the board would have to approve.
Sure. I'm just throwing out an idea here, just like Ms. Sandage was mentioning.
Let me ask you this, just to kind of cut for the time. Maybe this next Monday is when Personnel and Human Resources will give us updates. Maybe we can go back and have Ms. Herndon and Dr. Bish and Dr. Williams do an analysis to us, a report that goes back to 2018, that kind of gives us that last time that he was fully staffed, and move it forward and show us, you know, what we look like and what has been done, what the increases have been. I know we did authorize a sign-on bonus. So, can y'all just put that report together for us and present it at the business meeting next week?
Yes.
And again, I don't want to take up any more time that we have. And what are we doing online for recruitment? Are we, you're saying we're adding Spectrum 14? What are we, are we doing the Facebook LinkedIn, all that other stuff?
Yeah. So, everything right now is being pushed out across social media, as we have openings, LinkedIn, all of the platforms that we could use. We are looking at adding News 14 as one of our places that we will go, beginning with Transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Farr?
Thanks for your update, and I think we've had this conversation every meeting in the last three months about Transportation. So, we appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate Dr. Kapiki's explanation. I mean, every industry in America is going through the same thing, and so we know it's a difficult situation. And so we know it's a difficult situation. But I like Rob's idea of, of, you know, we had a board chair at one time that told us, I'll never forget it, my first year, he said, don't bring me any more problems, bring me solutions. So I appreciate the fact that people are trying to bring solutions. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell.
So again, thank you guys very much. And I and I completely recognize that this is an issue going on throughout the country. I have made or been made aware of the fact that it's not just necessarily the hiring that we're having issue with too, but then once they're hired, the state then has to send certain information to that person as well. So if that information doesn't get from the the hired employee from the state level, then it can kind of push back their start date as well. Is that correct? Right, so we're having issues not just on the hiring side of it, but also on the state level side of it and making sure that when we do hire these folks, that we're getting them the materials that they need so that we can get them started ASAP. So again, thank you guys so much for hard, all of your hard work, and we know that this is a struggle, but thank you again for for everything you're doing.
Yeah, and thank you, Lauren. In addition to that, you know, if if they don't have a CDL license, then at that point, there's a process for that to happen. So if we hire somebody today and they have to go get their CDL license, we're talking a couple of weeks, several weeks before they're actually going to be driving a bus. And so that that prolongs the process as well. So there's, there's all kind of stuff that goes into this and is, you know, it's not like you can hire them today and they're back and they're on the bus tomorrow. A lot of times, you hire them today and you won't see them for a month and be ready to drive at that point. So just to give you an idea of of the the delay that that we're up against a lot of times.
Ms. Carpenter.
And I know we were checking out some other options, and I suppose these other options that we talked about, well, that we gonna get a report on on that? John?
Yes, I can talk to you about some of those other options. I know that I've talked with Art about several of them. I don't have my notes in front of me now, so I don't want to misspeak. Some of them that we did look into, there were some caveats as to reasons why we could not go down those roads, so.
Okay, well.
But I can talk to you about that, yeah.
And the other thing, I know the salary study was talked about. When, I mean, it was talked about, it shouldn't take us long. Do we have any date now when this salary study is going to be complete?
Yeah, so Dr. Bish reached out to a company here in North Carolina that specializes in those salary studies. We've had our initial meeting with them. She wrote the proposal and sent it back to them. She obviously, I didn't get to speak with her much today, but I think she was waiting to hear back from them. And she's requested it as soon as they can get it on their docket.
And so we still don't have a time definite?
Don't have a time definite on it yet, no.
I mean, we.
I think she'll probably be able to give you that update next week.
Okay, because we need to move ahead with this. I mean, this is hinging on a lot of things. This with the bus drivers, this, so we need to move this along, so.
Yes, she's working diligently on it.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Adcock.
Thank you, guys, for the presentation and just for keeping us updated on, again, a challenging time. And I know this is the national crisis, but I do want to recognize the additional stress that all of this is putting on our families and our students, just with long bus rides and then kids getting to schools late. I mean, I would think that we just need to say that we know that is occurring as well. So thank you again, appreciate it.
Okay, so if you can do a report that would date back to two thousand and eighteen, I think that would be, give us a good snapshot of, you know, what it what it looks like and what it looked like back then. Is eighteen good for the board members? Do you want anything indifferent? I just selected that since that's the one they said they were fully staffed at. Is that good? Okay. And then an update on the analysis, the salary analysis. And I know Dr. Bish is working on that. I know this was all supposed to have been for the business meeting, my apologies, but at least now you know where they are that you could include and your information coming back to us.
And Madam Chair, I will to answer Ms. Sandage's question, twelve E C open, twelve E C teacher openings at present. You're very welcome.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And now I'd ask Ms. Sarah Reeves to come to the podium and give you an update on the learning loss retention.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kapiki. I'm here just to update everyone on the big conversation around learning loss and where we are at. If you don't mind hitting the next slide. So just to recap, and at our last board meeting, Mr. Stain actually went over the data release that went public to the state. And so I just felt like as a, to frame the conversation and just kind of where we are at, I will tell you that learning loss can be encompassed in a lot of different things. But obviously, the one measure that we are really looking at right now is from an academic perspective, specifically as it relates to the state accountability measures. And so as you can see right now, pre-pandemic, just a reminder, we we ended with a sixty-five point six percent proficiency rating, and we are now back up to sixty point two. So we're still lagging about five percent behind where we were pre-pandemic as it relates to achievement results. So we know that we aren't where we need to be yet. But I will also say, we also have to take into consideration that the daily average attendance rate of our students was historically lower than we had ever seen before in our school. So much of this is not only coupled with teaching and learning aspect, but also making sure that our kids are in school and they're able to access the content. And so this is where we we hit as a district, so specifically, while we aren't where we need to be, we are ninety-two percent of the way there. And so when we look specifically at the the largest twelve districts in the state, and then if we can go to the next slide, our surrounding districts kind of seeing where we've landed. Obviously, we know we have some work to do, but I think it's important to acknowledge the wins for our staff. They are doing the right things, right? Incredible teaching and learning is happening in the classrooms, and we just have to continue the focus as we move forward. So today, I just wanted to highlight the three biggest things that I believe are going to be the game changers and the big rocks that we are focused on as a teaching and learning. Specifically, I know we've gotten a lot of questions. So the first is our summer bridge. So this was our ESAR-funded programming. I know Ms. McLean shared a little bit about the summer bridge for our rising kindergarteners, which was a wonderful highlight. And so this is the program that we did for rising kindergarten, rising sixth and rising ninth grade students. And the intentionality in this program was really to help support with transitions. We acknowledged the fact that many of our students were going through a lot of transitions to begin with. And so any student that may be at risk, we invited, and then we ended up having additional seats available, so we invited other kids to to fill those seats. We did get a few questions. This is not the same thing as our Read to Achieve camp. So I know that they run simultaneously, but we also still host the Read to Achieve camp in the summer, and that's for our rising third and rising fourth grade students. The other thing that we are really proud of and continuing to promote is our Career Accelerator. And so this is really just to give students job opportunities and exposure to different CTE pathways before they they necessarily commit to one. And so we will continue with that for the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. We acknowledge that our summer is going to be shorter, so we're going to have to be really intentional about when we have these camps and how to get the participation. But we are currently in the process of soliciting feedback from our stakeholders to figure out when a good time is to have these camps. The other thing, just to mention, as you may recall, in May, you approved the purchase of our Mastery Connect TE twenty-one benchmarks. And I really feel like this is a phenomenal way to get a pulse check on where we are at before we get autopsy results in May on EOG and EOC scores. So these are taken by all of our students that are in end-of-grade or end-of-course course areas. And really, it allows us to be able to get a predictive measure. So it actually gives us predictive proficiency and it's within a ninety-eight percent accuracy rate. So we are heavily monitoring these in the windows of October, January, and March to make sure we are not only staying the course, but then we actually get the data back to figure out what standards or what areas are students still grappling with. And then obviously, our curriculum and instruction team, as well as the assistant superintendents, the principals, and the leads at each of the schools are devising strategic plans to be able to go in and intervene really early, which we are really proud of, and we will be continuing that work this year. And last but certainly not least, I think it's really important, I know I mentioned this during our legislative agenda session, but getting ahead on the concept that we we do not have time to go back and reteach the two years in which students may have had intermittent or gaps in their learning. And so this is really the philosophy around accelerate, don't remediate. So if you struggled in third grade math content because you were in remote learning, we're not going to go back and stop what we are teaching to teach you third grade. There is actually ways that we can be able to take the standards in the course that you are currently in and we can scaffold up. So we know, okay, these are the prerequisite skills that you need to have. We are going to teach you on grade-level standards and infuse that work. And so we are doing that through professional development opportunities with our principals, with our teachers, and with our beginning teachers. And all of this framework is actually in our curriculum documents as well that we've been in the process of revising. So certainly, we are, we know that we have some ways to go, but I do believe that we have a really strong plan in place, strong supports, and we have progress monitors along the way over the course of the year that we will be committed to. Are there any questions?
I'll open the floor up for discussion and begin with Ms. Adcock.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and I really like that we have all kinds of different solutions to help our students. I did want to ask, the TE twenty-one pulse check, when will that come out as far as the outcomes?
That's a great question. So the nice thing is it's our assessment. So the students will take it in October, and within four days of the window closing, we get the results back. So it's really immediate and timely. And we actually, this this afternoon, we're meeting to talk about what those data digs look like with the school administrators and then with the teachers.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you for the update, and this is great to see. And so as soon as we get those, let us know, because I'll be very interested to see that. And thank you so much for the update.
Ms. Blackwell.
Thank you again, Sarah, for the presentation. I did want to kind of go back to the beginning of the presentation a little bit, just because I, and I want to make sure that I heard this correctly. When we were talking about being behind five percent in achievement, did you say something about our attendance being down currently?
So that was last year. So our daily average attendance rate was one of the lowest that we had ever seen historically. I think we hovered between ninety-four and ninety-six percent daily attendance, which we never saw. And a lot of that was due to quarantines, candidly. And so that, I firmly believe, impacted the results of last year. That is not that this year's attendance data.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
That we are better on attendance now than we were last year. Okay, awesome, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Mr. Furr.
Thank you, and no questions.
Mr. Walter.
Thanks for the presentation. Could I put you on the spot for a minute? What is our SMART goal for, what do you want to see next year when you present these numbers? What number of proficiency should we expect with all these efforts?
That is a great question. I mean, certainly, we have to surpass the sixty-five point six. And so I think that that's going to be something unilaterally, that we have worked with every single school improvement team to be in upwards of five percent over where we landed pre-pandemic.
Five percent increase overall. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage.
Thanks for the presentation. I don't have anything to say because it would be the same thing I said last meeting. So I just appreciate this and being able to see it again. It's really good, thanks.
Thank you, we really appreciate that, that was great. Dr. Kapiki.
Thank you, Mrs. Reeves. Then briefly, I just want to talk a little bit about safety and some of the things that we are doing in our schools and some of the things that I can discuss in a public forum. First, I want to thank our students and our staff who are absolutely outstanding in light of some of the recent challenges that we had, the recent events we had surrounding Stacey. Our faculty and and our students were just exemplary in how they handled the these situations that they were dealing with in terms of some of the safety issues that we just went through. I'd like to also thank the Concord Police Department and Cabarrus Sheriff's Office. Again, their support is exceptional. They're always there when we reach out to them, and they continue to provide excellent service to us. And again, to remind folks that we have SROs in every building. Recently, our county commissioners, again, just approved full-time SROs at all of our early colleges, our Cabarrus Health Science Institute, and at our preschool. So that's great news. We continue to increase our school counselors, our social workers, and our psychologists in all of our schools. And again, our goal is always to be proactive and not reactive. I'd like to thank our parents for being very diligent about reporting things when they see it. And I can't emphasize enough that it takes an entire community to keep schools safe. We need all of you to be very aware and cognizant of what's going on in the school grounds and the areas that that you bring your kids to. If you see something, say something, report to the police, use our online portal system that you can report something on, but definitely communicate that to all that you you engage in, and specifically that school that you may see something that is not on the ordinary. Just if it doesn't feel right, doesn't look right, call the principal, let them know what you see, and we'll act on it immediately. Over the years, we've installed over four thousand security cameras in our facilities and in our bus fleet. As you're going to act on this evening, there's a camera motion on there this evening for our buses that that the board is supporting. We appreciate that. And an update on our vestibules, all of our schools have the vestibules in place now. We have J.M. Robinson, Hickory Ridge High Schools, those are framed out. We're actually waiting on the glass to come in for those vestibules, and they'll be, they'll be finished up. And we anticipate having C.C. Griffin completed by the end of the the calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. We have over forty, we have over forty metal detectors in our high schools and in our middle schools, so we have those in place as well. They've been distributed and we use that. We've just passed a a no-bag rule for all of our athletic events. I know that's been met with some resistance, but again, it's about keeping our kids safe and keeping our environment safe. I appreciate the community's cooperation with that. It's been very well received, and the cooperation by the community has been been outstanding for that, so we do appreciate that. And then we continue to conduct our own safety office, our own safety audits internally, and we've done over a dozen of those thus far this year and continue to do those on every school and report back to the principals on what we see. So I'm not going to say you can never be too safe because you can't, but I will say that it is our priority every day as we walk into our buildings. It's what we focus on first and foremost to make sure we keep our kids safe. And we continue to look for ways in working with the State Bureau of Investigation and working with our law enforcement folks and working with the 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 local police at every level to make sure that we're doing all we can to keep our kids safe. So I just want to reassure our public that, you know, while again, I can't, you can never guarantee anything, I can tell you that it is a priority in this district and that we do focus on it every day. But I want to emphasize, it's all of us together, working together to make sure we keep our our children safe in our schools, and I appreciate all the work that you're all doing. So thank you for that. Just to remind the folks that this month is National Principals Month. We'd like to say thanks to all of our principals who are working every day to champion for all of our students. And we'd like to invite all of our junior and senior parents to attend the Fall Pay for College Night presentation that's being held at West Cabarrus High School on Thursday, October sixth, from six to seven thirty. It's a great night to find out about the resources that are available to help pay for college, as well as a chance to ask questions about filling out the FACI form. So anyone that would like to attend that, again, that is this Thursday, October sixth, from six to seven thirty at West Cabarrus High School. The inaugural Cabarrus County Schools Futures Fair is coming up on October seventeenth at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center. This event will feature not only our program choice offerings for current students in Cabarrus County Schools, but also extend the fair to include college, career, and military options for our upcoming graduates. The Futures Fair will begin at six P.M. and information will be available soon on the CCS website. So I ask all of you to keep, keep an eye on the website for more news coming up on that. And then lastly, the two thousand and twenty-two Cabarrus County Schools Experimental Provider Fair was held last week at Roberta Road Middle School. This professional development event connected our community resources providers with all of our Cabarrus County Schools counselors, social workers, and school psychologists through interactive problem-solving scenarios. The goals of this learning opportunity were to create a context for understanding the availability of services in our provider network and to increase the likelihood of staff making well-informed referrals in the best interest of students and families. So I thank our staff and I thank all that were involved in putting that fair. It was very successful. And again, we continue to focus on trying to provide all the best for our students here in the Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Burns will probably be upset with me if I fail to mention that we need to recognize that October is the month we observe the anti-bullying month, and we've been asked next Monday if we will all wear blue. Many of you did that tonight, we appreciate that, but just next Monday night, if you could make sure we do that, just in observing that. Yes, sir?
I have one more that I'd be very missed. Yesterday was actually National Custodians Day, so I wanted to take a special moment to thank all of our custodians, all the maintenance folks that take care of our schools and our facilities. One thing that I continually see when I go into buildings is the impeccable condition that our maintenance folks provide in the buildings. They are clean, they're, when you walk in, it's just, it's, they're clean, they're updated, they're, they're just spectacular, providing a great environment for our kids and our public to walk in every single day. So if you see our custodians and our maintenance folks, please thank them for the hard work that they do, because we could not open our buildings without them. And their work they do quietly, quietly and really without complaint, do a fantastic job. So, I thank them for all the work that they do and provide a great environment for our kids and our publics to walk into every day, so thank you.
Thank you and I know that was a lot of information, a lot of reports. Before we move on to attorney comments, is there any other reports or information the board would like for next Monday night other than what we've covered? And I will ask Ms. Sandage to start, any comments, questions or any information request?
I don't have any right now, other than what I've already said. I just want to make, I was just going to state that I didn't want to offend anybody by my comments about bus drivers, I just want you to hear that I am really concerned. I get those emails from those parents whose kids come home very late at night, I get those emails from the bus drivers who are concerned about what they're, how they're working and I just want us to make note of that. I hear that we are doing everything that we can, I just want us to find some other strategies and I'm willing to be a part of that solution discussion and I have been a part of that solution discussion. I will send emails where I get recommendations. If folks want to continue to send emails of recommendations or messages, however they need to get that to me, I am willing to send that to our superintendent and to our bus driver supervisor and I have done that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I've got the emails and had conversations as well about this bag policy and I'd really like to see us consider a clear bag policy instead of a no-bag policy.
I'll add that for discussion, Mr. Furr?
Nothing.
Ms. Blackwell?
No ma'am.
Ms. Carpenter?
No.
Ms. Adcock?
No.
Okay, with that being said, we will move on to 4.03, which is our attorney comments, anything tonight, Mr. White, Mr. Vogel?
Nothing.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, 5.01, committee reports. Board members, this is your time to update us on any reports you might have on the positions you sit and Ms. Adcock, I'll begin with you.
I just wanted to give an update on the BOE student interns that are here tonight, there's three of them here and they have been very busy on tours. We toured the bus center and learned more about food and how inflation is affecting those areas and as well as the technology department. So, we are just moving along and they are very curious and asking lots of questions.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, anything?
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Blackwell?
So, I will just give a quick update as we are going to be discussing more in-depth with policies 3200 and 3210, but we did Literature and Supplemental Material Committee meeting last Tuesday, September the 27th and we were able to kind of work through a lot of the issues that we had had with some of these policies to begin with that we brought back to them. I just have to express again how much I appreciate the input from the literature committee, I think they did a wonderful job, we had great discussion and just thank you guys for all of the hard work that you've done.
Mr. Furr, anything? Mr. Walter? Ms. Sandage?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you guys. Now, we will move to 5.02, which is our audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. We will have Mrs. Carol Herndon to the podium.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to set a little bit of a context before Adam comes to share the actual audit report with you all. It has been a challenging year 21-22 for finance departments, really across our state, across our nation, specific to Cabarrus County Schools. As you all know, during last school year, our long-term CFO left the organization and the department and the department was without a CFO for a couple of months. Did a fabulous job holding things together. When I came onboard at the beginning of the calendar year, I was really impressed with their fortitude and really did not skip a beat. They had to train me in all things Cabarrus County and were super welcoming and patient in that regard and showed a lot of grace and partnership as I transitioned into the organization. If you look at really across the state and across the nation, the creep-up of inflation across last school year was really hard to manage from a budget perspective because a planned budget dollar didn't go as far as we thought it would in the face of inflation and how to manage and use our expenditures in a way that best served our students was really hard in an inflationary environment. It remains that way today. On top of that, we experienced significant supply chain issues in our state and our nation and many of the expenditures that we planned did not materialize because we couldn't take delivery of the items that we had ordered and so we had to drop back and rethink those spending plans, not to spend the money just for the sake of spending it, but what ways could we effectively change our plans and spend the money that had been allotted to our district last year? And that took lots of conversation, lots of planning, not only with departments and schools across our district, but also with our vendor community and being crystal clear about what we could receive in time to record those expenditures against last school year's budget and what we were not going to be able to. And we really had to be super nimble as a district to navigate through that, particularly in the last quarter of the last fiscal year and so just unprecedented times in that regard. The influx of ESER funding, which has been a huge blessing and also a lot of work. I think I've mentioned to you all several, on several occasions, that some of my peers have readily said, "I don't want it, like, don't give it to me" and when they did receive it, they didn't spend it because the rules and the regulations and the deadlines are overwhelming, but we did not stand in fear of that. We took responsibility for that funding and we are making really wise decisions, particularly as these smaller ESER funding buckets come to us and are much more directly related to our students and specifically as Sarah shared earlier, some of our intervention work as it relates to learning laws. So, it's no surprise that in our state, and I can only speak for our state, there's been a lot of turnover in finance departments across North Carolina and a lot of vacant positions and I share all of that with you really to celebrate the finance team. They are a dedicated, loyal and resilient bunch who have given this district more than they probably were ever asked to give them across 2021, 2022 for all the reasons that I just described and I'm so proud of them and we are, as a department, getting more responsive in the spirit of being partners to and in service of our schools and our departments and we're going to continue to work on that and just want to give them a big shout-out. These audit results are their work and their achievement and I'm super proud of them. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Adam. He is here with Anderson Smith &amp; White to present our audit report. I will say that Adam has also been very welcoming to me as the new CFO here at CCS. We have a great independent partnership with our auditors. He allows us to reach out and ask questions along the way, we don't save things until they get here for the audit. We have lots of dialogue across the year and he helps us think things through and I value that immensely. So, Adam, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time today. Again, my name is Adam Superk, I'm a partner with Anderson Smith &amp; White. Our firm is the independent auditors hired by the board to conduct the audit of management. There are a couple of deliverables here provided for this evening. I'm going to go over mainly one of them, the summary financial information, but also attached is a letter to the board, again, the governing body that hires us to conduct the audit of management. That letter is just to let you know that the audit went as planned, even with the changeover in leadership, we were still able to meet all the deadlines, the timelines, the weeks that we have typically come out and conducted field work. The fact that I'm still here at the October meeting as in previous years, all of that went as planned, we had no disagreements with management and there were no material new pronouncements that affected the financial statements in any way that would need to be discussed again in that letter. Also attached is a 80-page PDF of your actual financial statements. Again, the local government commission requires that as part of our audit of management is to present the statements to the board available to answer any questions and go over some of the key points within the audit. Typically, we go over a summary information because there, in these 80 pages of data, there are some key elements that matter most to you and those center around local fund balance, change in local fund balance, school food service fund balance and change in school food service fund balance. And so, that's mostly what the information is in the summary presentation, but in the larger document, which is still in draft format, we're finalizing some letters, I don't anticipate any changes other than the actual date that we issue this. We need some letters from management, from representations and also from your legal counsel just before we finalize and actually date it and submit it to the LGC. But again, if there's any significant changes here, I'll be happy to come back to the board and explain those, but I don't anticipate that. Within that 80 pages, there are four letters. One is an opinion on the actual statements. It's a clean, unmodified opinion that says the financial statements, we believe, are accurate. They reflect the position, net position and fund balance of the school system as of June 30, 2022. There is also a letter over internal controls. We noted no deficiencies in internal controls over both finance and compliance with state and federal programs. There are two other opinion letters over compliance with state and federal programs. Every year, we have to audit the state public school fund and we have to audit at least 20% of your federal dollars. You received numerous amounts of COVID dollars, which are considered high-risk, those had to be audited as major, so this year, there were a large percentage of your federal dollars audited for compliance. We noted no question costs, no findings. Again, both those letter on the state and federal compliance, state that we believe that your compliance with all the major requirements for the funds that we audited as major, for the PRCs, the programs that we audited as major. So, across the board, a clean, unmodified opinion for financial statements and compliance and no deficiencies in internal controls. Now, for the, some of the important information, financial information, the first page, first graph is a comparison of cash, cash being the most important asset, what you have available to spend, but cash doesn't tell the whole story. You can maintain a set level of cash, but if your liabilities go up, then that cash means less and so that's exactly what we've seen here this year. While you still have over $25 million of cash on hand, your fund balance in your general and other special revenue fund, these are your two local funds, these are where you house the majority of your fund balance. These two funds used to be combined 10, 15 years ago to make up your general fund, but now are split up into two funds, the general fund and the other special revenue fund. You have about $15 million of fund balance on hand, most of which is available for appropriation and that's what this graph, the second graph shows as a comparison over the last three years, the actual decrease in that fund balance from last year and even more so from two years ago. The next graph shows just a comparison again of revenues and expenditures in those two funds and the change in fund balance as a small little green bar there. You can see there's nearly $100 million floating, flowing through those two funds compared to about 80-some million dollars last year, so a significant increase in local funds. But you can also see for the last two years, you've actually used fund balance. I think this is a planned coordinated effort to spend down some of that fund balance, so that should be no surprise, but you can see like again, the last two years compared to three years ago, that usage of fund balance. After that, we have the actual data behind those previous three, or previous three graphs. You can see as of June 30, 2022, cash on hand, 25.9 million, but your liabilities are 12.3 million, that compares to 8.3 million from the year before. The biggest increase in that liability is actually a liability to yourself, there's a $3.5 million due to capital outlay. There was an end-of-year transfer that didn't occur before the end of the year where you transferred local dollars to capital outlay for TURF renovations. Those projects have already been complete, so while it was payable to yourself, you quickly spent it out of capital. So, that, and that was actually driving the majority of the decrease in fund balance that transferred to capital. So, you can see your fund balance in 2022, as of June 30, $15 million. 1.2 million of that is non-spendable, that is made up of, oh, you can stay on that for that page there. 1.2 million is considered non-spendable. This is made up of inventories. Inventory are items you have already paid for, you have already spent the cash. While it's an asset, it is not an asset you can appropriate. You cannot budget light bulbs, fixtures and all of the tires, all the items that you hold in inventory, they're not available for appropriating. They're available for usage, but they're not available for spending, so they're considered non-spendable. You also have restricted fund balance. This restricted fund balance is AR, accounts receivable. The state has written laws so that you do not appropriate receivables that you don't receive before June 30, you have to wait a year before you can appropriate those dollars. This is just to prevent you from spending dollars you don't have, so they restrict by state statute, an amount equal to your receivables. The next two components make up your fund balance available for assignment. That totals about 13.5 million. You have assigned 11.5 million of that. These assignments are made up of several things. You have a half-million-dollar assignment of fund balance for workers' comp claims, you are self-insured workers' comp. That amount in previous years was a $1.5 million assignment. Management reevaluated it, looked at your last couple of years, workers' comp payouts and premiums and adjusted that down to a $500,000 assignment for workers' comp claims. You also have some ongoing litigation regarding retirement payouts for what's called spiking claims. There is a $900,000 assignment of fund balance for the potential to have to pay those spiking payments. And then there is the biggest component, $5 million is assignment, is assigned for next year's budget in your local fund and 2 million is assigned for next year's fund balance or next year's appropriation in your general and your other special revenue fund. So, your budget for 2223 is written conservatively at this point to potentially use $7 million of fund balance and so that $7 million is a part of that 11 million assigned fund balance. This year, you used across those two funds, 4.6 million, so if you repeat again, the same level of revenues expenditures, you could potentially use the amount assigned for fund balance or assigned in the next year's budget, but again, I believe that's a conservative estimate. The amount that was previously assigned in the 2122 budget, again, took into consideration a $3.5 million transfer from general to capital outlay. The rest of it is unassigned, that's the $2 million remaining in the general fund, it's considered unassigned fund balance. You're only allowed to have one unassigned fund balance, that's within the general fund. Fund 8, the other special revenue fund, it also has some available funds that are not restricted, they're not assigned in the budget, but because they are in that fund 8, they're automatically a part of that assigned fund balance. So, really, when you look at your fund balance, assigned and unassigned, that 13 and a half million is really where you do, I think, most of your analysis on what do we have, what do we have planned for next year's budget? Do we think these assignments for workers' comp and retirement are just potential or what is the percentage chance that these become actual liabilities? And then also, how much available fund balance is in fund 8 and is just assigned just because it's sitting in fund 8? There's a major revenue source, indirect cost. With these large federal dollars, these ESER funds, you're able to charge indirect cost on those. Those dollars go into fund 8 and are automatically considered assigned fund balance, even though they're available for appropriating wherever you may want. Revenues and expenses, expenditures for this year, $91 million in revenues and $95.8 million in expenditures gives you that $4.6 million usage of fund balance. Again, this is the most important page of data, all from the 80 pages in the financial statements. If there are any questions, again, I'm happy to answer or we can hold it to the end, but again, to me, these are some of the most important numbers found within the statements.
Board members, do you want comments or questions at this time, anybody or you want to wait? We're good? Okay.
All right. All right, the next page just shows you how much flows through your capital outlay fund, also kind of gives you a comparison of your beginning fund balance, shows that you start out with $100,000. This fund is really your projects funded by the county, you've typically historically carried very little fund balance there. You received $35 million, spent $31 million and have $4 million of fund balance. $35 million, spent $31 million, and have $4 million of fund balance, of which 3.5 million is that receivable from local for the turf, which was then spent. So we're going to see the 100,000 turn to 4 million this year, but next year, the 4 million will turn back down to several hundred thousand, because again, those turf funds have already been spent. So this is a temporary spike in capital fund balance, again, due to the turf projects really occurring after June 30. After that, we have some graph, a graph with some information on your school food service fund. Across the state, we saw these funds actually make some money this year. The high reimbursement rate provided by the USDA, along with the return to more traditional learning, having kids in school, being able to provide meals to every kid, every child eating for free at this high reimbursement rate, even though there were challenges in the supply chain and inflationary pressures, you were able to actually add a lot of cash to your bottom line, really recouping some of the revenues lost over the previous two years. And so you see the, the spike there in revenues, the increase in cash and cash equivalents to over $10 million on hand, that bright green line representing basically the net income provided by that fund. So again, a very positive year for your district. Again, across the state, we saw this, but being able to capitalize on that reimbursement rate, on the kids, being able to eat for free, I think was key towards, again, replenishing those lost funds from the previous two years of COVID. The data for that graph is on the next page. You can see that $10.5 million of cash compares to 3.4 million from the previous year. Total liabilities remain consistent. Your revenues totaled 23.2 million compared to 10 million from the previous year. So a doubling of activity really helped drive that increase of 8.6 million in net assets, of which 7 million was cash. The school food service fund is a business-type fund, so you have to record liabilities for pension directly in the fund. So when you see a change in net assets of 8.5 or 8.6 million, it means less than the change in cash to make, because there are some non-cash assets and liabilities that change there that don't really affect what you have available for spending. So going from 3.4 million to 10.5 million is the true metric for success in this fund. After that, we have some graphs on total expenditures across your other funds. You can see majority of your funds come from the, from the state, the State Public School Fund. You can see also the increase in the federal expenditures to nearly $40 million this year. Your local funds representing almost $100 million of your total expenditures. Again, just putting your local dollars in perspective to your other funding sources. The same thing is on the next graph. This is just on a per pupil basis. Again, very consistent with the pre, previous graphs. Your ADM going up this, this year definitely helped increase and drive those expenditures. The data for both of these charts is on the next page, and you can see your state expenditures were 223 million compared to 212 the previous year. Federal expenditures, 42.6 million versus 25 million, heavily driven by ESTER funds, CARES funds, GEAR funds, all of these COVID-19 funds, which will begin to expire in 2023 and 2024. So determining the amount of expenditures that are one-time or will end when these programs end, or when these funds expire, versus what are going to be ongoing and continuing expenditures after those expire. I think a lot of districts are utilizing that indirect cost rate to pad some fund balance, to be able to make these programs available after federal funds expire. So again, just a heavy increase in federal expenditures driven by those ESTER funds. You can see your ADM, 33,454 kids. Total expenditures per student excluding capital outlay, $10,831. And then, as I said, the last page, beginning with the actual statements, no findings, no reportable conditions, and no question costs across the board on compliance, financial statements, and internal controls. That's all I've got. Again, there's a lot of information in the booklet. The summary report is just to kind of pull out the most important data. Then also, just being here and available to let you know that the audit went well, as planned, a great finance department, new leadership, didn't miss a beat, and really, the audit went well.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open up the floor for discussion and begin with Ms. Edka. Comments or questions?
I don't really have any comments or questions about it. I will just put a plug in for Ms. Herndon. Just kudos to you. And I know you came in, in up into the school system at a time when we had a lot of issues going on. So kudos that you got this done, and you have those remarks from him.
Ms. Carpenter?
I just want to thank you for the report. Do you see anything that we maybe need to look at, to be looking at, to be, we were really concerned because our fund balance was a little bit lower than we really liked, that we said, hey, because as you said, I noticed on one of the reports, she said, hey, we may, may need 7 million instead of 5 million. But is there any area that you saw that maybe we need to watch a little bit closer?
Well, as, as it equates to fund balance, the fund balance matters in relation to the conversations with the county, and their willingness to fund any shortfalls. There are discussions across the state between school board and county. And we actually have seen most counties actually increasing fund balance this year. But historically, Cabarrus County Schools has been increasing fund balance for quite a while, to the tune of almost $22 million two years ago. And so school systems not being the actual taxing authority are really at the mercy of the county. And that relationship between county and school system needs to be quick to react to funding needs. And that's not always the case on a county-by-county basis. So school systems need that cushion of fund balance to fund unfunded mandates from state and federal sources. The State Public School Fund, even just looking at retirement benefits, the cost of, for every dollar you pay in salary, there is a 30-cent payment that gets sent out for post-employment health benefits and pension liabilities. And those expenditures are not funded dollar-for-dollar every year by the State Public School Fund, and certainly not by the federal government. So that cushion of fund balance is what helps manage those changes. And as long as the county is good with your numbers and your fund balance levels, and are committed to their funding levels in future years, you don't need $22 million. Obviously, I don't want to see you using another 5 million this year, and another 5 million next year, because then you'll be in the paper for not having enough fund balance. And there are some sister counties about your size that have had those struggles. And it's a difficult road to come out of. Fund balance comes off the books way faster than it goes on. You can spend 10 years adding $2 million a year, and in three years, it can be wiped out using 5 million a year. And that's, and that's really how it happens. The, the school systems, they, they're almost like steering a battleship as far as how you can go from using fund balance to making fund balance. And all is based on, again, that, the conversations with the county, and their willingness to increase their level of funding on an ongoing basis. So I don't think there's any reason to sound an alarm at this level, but you are using your fund balance at a, at a high level, and at some point, you want to stop to give yourself that little bit of cushion for those unfunded, unfunded, unfunded mandates.
So Carolyn actually stole my question. So thank you very much. And Carol, thank you so much for all of your hard work as well. I agree with Denise. Thank you.
Mr. Fur?
I'd just like to say thanks to the finance department for a good job. And could you look at page 61? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Walter?
All right, another fund balance question. So we have a policy that says the board will maintain a fund balance of a minimum of one month's operating expense, 8%, in compliance with the recommendation of the local government commission. Fund balance in excess of one and a half months' operating expense, 12% will be considered by the board for appropriation. Where are we with that? Are we over this 8%? Or we, where's, what does that entail?
That would entail looking at your local funds. You can't, you can't maintain 8% of your $400 million budget. You're really looking at that 100 million. So 8% of 100 million would be a minimum of $8 million of fund balance.
And that's total fund balance. That's not unallocated or allocated. I mean, you did a good job of explaining the different breakdowns on that one slide. What was it, number five?
Yeah. And if your policy doesn't specify which fund balance, I would exclude the, the inventories, the non-spendable, because those, again, just, there are many districts that don't even record inventory on their books to avoid that non-spendable fund balance, because it does kind of muddy the water as far as, it's an asset, but it doesn't have cash value in the form of being able to appropriate. And so I would also look at the other, the general fund and the other special revenue fund combined, again, because in previous years, and I don't know when that policy dates back to, but those are your two local sources.
So when it gets around the 8 million mark, then we have an issue, a big issue?
Right, yeah. I would, across those two funds, $8 million, like, that is operating at a pretty minimal level. At some point, you even get into cash flow issues. There's a minimum amount of fund balance needed just to make sure you have enough money to make payroll every month. And whether that's $8 million, or $10 million, or $6 million, I don't know. Again, Carolyn would be able to answer that better. But if your policy is, without specifying what to look at, the, the best option would be looking at your total local funds, Fund Two and Fund Eight, compared to those revenue sources.
Okay. And then the other question had to do with our, the child nutrition fund. So we've made money, more revenue than we, we have. Where is, is there a fund balance for that, or is that part of that?
There, there is a window that DPI suggests, one to three months of operating cash. They used to look at that in terms of whether you would be able to charge indirect cost or not. Child nutrition, it's a, it's a federal program. They benefit from having a HR department that they don't have to pay for, a finance department, and they don't pay their own electric bill. So you charge them indirect cost. There's been a lot of changes this year to that calculation of indirect cost. It's, this year's been limited to just 8%. And you have to have at least two months of cash on hand to be able to charge that 8%. You're able to charge that 8%. You charge it this year, you can charge it next year. I don't, I don't have any data on your 2223 revenues and expenditures, but I know just from conversations, getting kids to now start paying for meals that they have gotten for free the last two years has been difficult. I don't anticipate any kind of reoccurring financial gain of this magnitude at all, if not using a lot of that, those dollars added this year.
So those dollars can be used towards that, towards that over the next couple of years?
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, that, those, those dollars are available. They, they have to be spent on child nutrition. They're federal funds that have to be reinvested into the program. You can charge indirect cost up to a point of about one month's operating. So there's 14 million, 14 and a half million. You actually look at nine months. So once, once, or sorry, once cash is about $2 to $3 million, you're not able to charge indirect cost anymore. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, just, we're looking at a shortfall this year, apparently. So we're.
Yeah, if, yeah, if you're looking at a 2023 shortfall in child nutrition, that $10 million certainly can go towards child nutrition's shortfall, but not, not your general operating.
That was the question.
Yeah, you can, you can only, you can only take out from child nutrition into local funds, 8% of their expenditure.
I got, I got that point.
To the tune of.
If it's a child nutrition deficit, you can use those funds towards that deficit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And then, and again, the.
But there's not, there's not a time limit on having to spend those money, those money.
Yeah, right. Now, you have plenty of time. And if you actually go over three months, you have to, you have to provide a spend-down plan to DPI. You'll never have to give those funds back. They just want to know your plan going forward on, do you anticipate using fund balance for operations, for capital expenditures, new equipment? So they, they want you to maintain one to three months, and they want information from you when you have over three months, and they want information from you if you have under one month. But you'll never be asked to give money back, or, yeah, you'll never be asked to give money back. Once child nutrition runs out of money, it has to be locally funded.
But you're saying it's in good, good shape right here.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. That, that increase definitely replenished some losses from the previous two years.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Ms. Sandich?
Thanks for the presentation, and thanks for working with our team, even though it was brand-new. Thanks to Carol and your team for making sure that this happened without any interruptions. I truly appreciate all that. Rob took my question that I had, but I just wanted to know, do I understand you saying that right now, in your professional opinion, Cabarrus County Schools is okay financially?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for being with us tonight. And I'll just also reiterate the board comments about Ms. Herndon. We really appreciate all of y'all's hard work. We appreciate you being here with us tonight. And we definitely want to recognize the relationship we do have with the county commissioners and that finance department over there. So thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Board members, we will move to 5.03. Cabarrus County property transferred to City of Concord for the WW Flow Park. We'll have Mr. Tim Louder to the podium. Good evening.
Evening. Thank y'all very much. I come to unite as a point of information, pretty much, on this, this particular item. As you know, WW Flow borders Central Cabarrus High School, large campus, about 120 acres. At this point in time, the City of Concord manages the park. And actually, the park was transferred from Cabarrus County to the City of Concord in 2007. Concord is doing a bond package, and they're doing quite a bit of recreation park expansion throughout the city. A part of that is some improvements to WW Flow Park. I think you have a master plan that shows the improvements they're doing to the park. As part of that, they requested to take six acres that was on the opposite side of the creek from Central Cabarrus, pretty much not used by the school system. About 20% of it's flood plain, and the other four acres of it's kind of, I guess, a topography challenge, as I say. They have pretty steep slopes. But they intend to put walking trails and part of their, to make a course through there for trails that we would use as part of our cross-country team course as well. Our cross-country course goes into that part of the property now. We will be able to reuse that. We also have an agreement set up with Concord, once they take over the property, that we can go in there and do some maintenance and improvement of that, as our cross-country team needs to use those trails. So we're fortunate. The good news is, Concord is going to build them for us, and they're going to help us maintain those, allow us to use them. Ms. Sheila Lowery is here with the City of Concord. Should you have any questions? I doubt you have many, but I want to make sure I gave that as a point of information. Cabarrus County did take that up tonight in their meeting, and they will, you know, next week or two weeks from now, they will actually vote to actually make the transfer, because they technically own the property for Cabarrus County.
So actually, you really do not need anything from us, because Cabarrus County is the party to do the transfer?
Yes, ma'am. And City, and City of Concord is taking care of all the, the survey, and all the property transfers, and all the legal documents necessary to make that transfer to that, to become part of the park property. And Cabarrus County is just making the transfer. Again, like I said, it's Cabarrus County's responsibility. They technically own the property. I'll come to unite, this is a point of information.
Okay, great. Board members, any comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Sandich.
I don't have any. Thank you for the presentation, though.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, just a couple thing, couple things. Um, yeah, just a couple thing, couple things. So this, really, for them to do the project, it's contingent upon this bond referendum that'll be on the ballot in November, number eight, is that correct?
Uh, part of the funds will come from that bond referendum. Some of the, they can do just without the bond referendum, because like I said-
Right, but they've got sixty million dollars worth of, worth of improvements to the parks in Concord. And if they can get that approved, then I think this happens fairly soon. I think it's a great thing. If it doesn't, that doesn't pass, we don't know when this, they could be ten years before they have funding to, to do the, do the park, or do the cross-country for our kids, for, for our students. Again, I would, again, if you're a member of the public, there's information out there right now on that bond issue, which is concordbonds.com. Please go visit it, take a look at it, see what the plans are. But there's a number of parks near, not just this school, but other schools, that may benefit our communities.
Mr. Fur.
No questions, but we, we already have a cross-country trail out there. I guess that would just enhance it or give them more.
Yes, sir. It would greatly improve what we have there now, which is, was a great benefit to us.
Ms. Blackwell.
No questions. Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Carpenter.
Well, thank you for proceeding with it, and hopefully, it will, because it's going to involve a lot of different parks, and we always need more parks and everything in our area with our population expanding like it is. That's always useful, and thank you for, for exploring this. Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions. Thank you. Okay.
All we can do is hope that the bond package will pass, because Concord and Cabarrus County could all use more park facilities, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Okay, board members, we have removed item five point zero four, so we will move to our items under consent or action for our business meeting on Monday, starting with six point zero one. We'll have the first purchase of bus camera equipment, Mr. John Legrand.
Thank you. Good evening again, board members. I come to you tonight requesting approval for a capital request to upgrade the bus video camera systems. Older equipment has reached life expectancy and needs to be replaced, and the quote to, this is a quote, to replace a hundred and fifty-five units in our buses. This is a safety issue, and it is something that is much needed on our buses, as this is something that is viewed on a daily basis by our staff. The dollar amount on that is four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents.
Okay, I'll open up the fourth floor for discussion. I'll begin with Ms. Adcock. Comments or questions?
I don't have any comments or questions, but thank you for continuing to keep our kids safe on our buses.
Ms. Carpenter.
How long is it going to take them to get this, to get here, if this is approved?
From what I understand, it is, it's not going to be a big turnaround. I don't know the specific amount of time, but we don't have any information that it's going to be a, a long turnaround period. We don't know of any supply issues with this specific model of camera.
I was, I was just curious, you know, you keep hearing about these chips and everything. I didn't know if there was any kind of chips in these cameras or anything. I mean, I'm all for it. I mean, there's no question about that, but I didn't know if they did have any kind of chips or anything in these cameras.
To my knowledge, and I, I could be off on this, but to my knowledge, I have not heard of any issues with that to this point.
Will this cover all our buses?
This will cover most of them, and it will get us to the point that transportation will be able to finish up the last few that will be, that will have left. So we'll be complete with having all of these new, they're not only cameras, but they are, they, they record sound as well. So we'll be able to hear and see everything that goes on the bus with an upgraded system. Some of these, a lot of these cameras that we have on our buses now are, were installed in two thousand and seventeen or before, and technology has changed a lot, as you know, in that amount of time. So this would be a good chance for us to upgrade that and be able to effectively monitor what's going on, on each of our buses.
Is, is this front, back, is this the whole-
It's throughout the bus.
And sides? I mean, does this cover everything?
Yeah, all the way through the bus.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Blackwell.
Carolyn, you just took all my questions, so definitely want to make sure that we keep our buses safe, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fur.
No questions.
Mr. Walter.
Um, just to, I guess, I, my questions were answered. I emailed them earlier, but I did a Google search on this, on this equipment, and, you know, here's where they're, we're paying two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars per bus, and I found it on Google for eight ninety-four, but I did ask that question, why is it eight ninety-four there? And I was told that, well, they're not a reseller, they'll sell one-off, you're not going to get a hundred and fifty-five at that price. So anyway, we're kind of stuck paying the twenty-one seventy-seven, but I do understa, the question was the lifespan of these things? How long do they last?
Typically, the ones we have now are about five years old. I don't know if these would, would be equipped with technology that would include them to last, or would allow them to last longer, but we expect to get at least five years out of them.
And I also thank you, Mrs. Herndon, for answering my question and sharing me the budget information, that we are actually less than, less than what we had budgeted, so thank you.
Ms. Sandich.
Thanks for keeping our buses safe. I just want to clarify that we do have cameras on our buses right now. They are just meeting the lifetime, and we need to replace them. So our cameras work on our buses?
That is correct. Every, every bus has a working camera. However, these would be better, more clear, able to record clearer sound, and help us be able to monitor our buses better.
Okay, board members, is this good for the consent agenda next week? Everybody good? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Legrand.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to six point zero two, the review of the recommended revisions on policy thirty-two hundred and thirty-two ten. We'll have Mr. Jay White to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The literature committee through, Mrs. Blackwell, went through thirty-two hundred and did not make any changes. There was a couple of comments, just an understanding about some of thirty-two hundred, but there were changes made on thirty-two ten. So, just so that the board understands where we are, is the last time there was a meeting, there was a discussion about thirty-two eleven that was created, and Mr. Walter said, is that something, and I believe the, the board, is that something that can be developed, or enveloped into thirty-two ten, and that's the product that you have before you. There were two meetings held since the last board meeting. I would characterize the meetings as very productive, very lively in discussion, and productive debate. So the end product is what you have before you. I can go over some of the changes, or I can just answer any questions that y'all may have, however you would like for me to do it.
Okay, so board members, I know you've had this policy for at least several days, but we will open the floor up for discussion, and I will begin with Ms. Adcock. Comments or questions?
I don't have any questions about it. I think it was a very collaborative effort, and I really liked the fact that we were able to use a lot of information that our community members were able to provide to us. So I'm very, I'm okay with this.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes. I was glad how the meeting went, that we had it set with a three-part stage, which is like our other policies, like if a student comes to us and they have a hearing, we're using the same type of procedure. But my question is, and again, I've said it before, if we have a, we get an email, and a parent has emailed us, and, and they said, ooh, I see this book, it's in the library right this very instant, and I want it out immediately. And, and, and it, so no other child can see this. I mean, it is definitely something that's terrible. I mean, just, it, it's definitely profanity. And they want it out, so nobody can see it then. And the policy, that first committee, I mean, the way we've got it set up right now, they need to go to the principal or to, because that's the way it's set up, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
They've got to talk to the principal or the librarian, but they've got to talk to the school. Right, correct?
Yes, ma'am. They talked to the principal, and the principals that were on the committee were saying that they, the principals would then pull in either a teacher, or a librarian, or media specialist, depending on the, where that source is, to meet with this person that is having concerns, to try and resolve it in that manner. And then if it can't be resolved, then they would fill out the reconsideration form, and they would start the process to level one, level two, or level three. Yes, ma'am.
But do they have the authority, or could they get, and that's what I'm wanting to make sure, there is something in there, or something within all this stuff we've done to get that removed or something? There's nothing in there at this point, anywhere in this, that could get that material removed for, just till something could be, that some of these groups could meet or something. We have nothing in there at this point to do that.
So-
No, from the audience, okay?
Is that correct?
That is correct, the way you said it. Let me tell you what the application would be. So the reconsideration committee at whatever level may comprise of a number of people, and, and I don't want to guess at how many numbers that would be. So instead of that reconsideration committee purchasing books on their own, the policy contemplates that those, that those books, that book, would be used not only from the library, from the library of the school that is being challenged, but at other libraries, so that they would be able to look at it. But I believe in the policy specifically, it says, and that was one of the concerns of the committees, is that the book can be used for the reconsideration committee, but would be available to others if, if that were, if they wanted to be checked out. Let me pull it up, so I can make certain I read it to you, or I can direct you to it. Okay, if you look under E, miscellaneous, and I'm quoting, it says, any challenged materi, that is on page six, well, it says six of five, but, but that'll be corrected. Page six, miscellaneous material, there you go. Whoop, there you go right here. Any challenged media collection material will remain in circulation, but may be used for review by the committee pending review and decision by the reconsideration committee or SIT, school improvement team. So, Mrs. Carpenter, if the books in, through the, through our libraries, or through wherever it's found, would be used by this committee, I don't know if there will be enough for the committee, or if there will be a plethora, an overabundance of that book. But that was one of the things the committee discussed, wanting to make certain it's still available, until it is reviewed and determined by one of the committees.
Well, that's where my concern, that could be, could be out there with very obscene or bad, for a week, two weeks, three weeks, and children, elementary, elementary, or, I mean, it could be, and that's, that's a real problem for me. And, and I wanted something in there where superintendent, or a principal, somebody could, could at least take it out of circulation until it could be reviewed by the principal, by the librarian, by somebody, until it could be reviewed by some of these committees. That's all I'm asking for, to get it out of these children's hands until it could be reviewed. That's, that's a real concern for me. I don't want these children seeing this. Our, our job is to educate the children on reading, writing, arithmetic. It's not to educate them on perversion or anything else. That's not what our job is, and that's not what I want. And I, maybe some of the other board members feel differently, but that's, that's not what our job is. And, and these committees, they can look at this stuff, but it doesn't need to be given to these children beforehand.
Ms. Carpenter, I'm going to stop the discussion for just a moment. So you're actually on the committee. So was that stated the other night? I mean, do you feel like you vetted your opinion to the committee the other night?
Well, I-
Key up, please.
I mean, I, I thought they were going to put that in there, and I've said it many times, and I thought they got it through their heads.
There was a vote on the, a document that was going to come to, to us tonight as a recommendation, so.
And it was going through three committees.
Right, but I'm asking, did, did you participate in that vote?
Yes, I did. And they said it was going to the principal, and I was assuming, maybe that's my, I'm sorry, I assumed, they said it was going to go to the principal, and I was thinking it was giving him, him the authority to do this, and I've said it so many times, that I was assuming that they give that authority to somebody.
Okay, well, let me hold that part. Is that the only issue that you had with this?
That's, that's my, that, yes, that's my big, to get that off of the shelves, you know.
Okay, so that's it?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Blackwell.
Okay, so I do want to say that I have, I mean, we worked extremely hard on this policy. I, I want to explain, if that is okay, that my, my role as the chair was to lead this committee into making some of these decisions, and as a majority, the committee voted the way that they did. And at this point, I am going to put my, my board hat on and speak about some of the things that I am concerned about with these policies as well. So to Carolyn's point, the purpose of the thirty-two eleven policy initially coming up was the concern for making sure that we had an opportunity to, if there was something that was egregious that was out there, would somebody have the authority to be able to pull that prior to this being reviewed by the school, or reviewed by the principal. Another concern that I have with this is the anonymous piece of it, which is also reflected in policy thirty-two hundred, but it's going to follow us into the form as well. And so we had at length discussion on whether or not we wanted to give the option for people to submit to us if there was materials in the library, understanding that, obviously, if it's in a classroom, and it's involving a specific assignment, that would be extremely difficult to be anonymous, especially if it's involving a child specifically. However, in this case, being able to report a book to us anonymously, in my opinion, I think is very important, because children rely on many adults in their lives that are, you know, could be a babysitter, could be, could be, you know, a family friend. If they see their children or child reading something, and they feel the need to be able to report that, in my opinion, I don't really care where, where the information comes from, even if it is anonymous. I mean, we are going to, according to this policy, post it online if we are reviewing a book anyway. So at that point, I think whoever is reporting it anonymously is going to understand that we're not going to be able to contact them directly and give them updates on where the book is heading, but they will be able to go online and seeing that it's being reviewed. So those were, those were my two, I think, my two biggest concerns. And then I also, I completely understand that at this point, in discussion with the parental section, how is that going to work? And that is something that, as a committee, at this point, we have not tackled that issue. But again, there are some libraries, according to the media specialists, that already have some type of parental section, that already have some type of parental approval. And, and that is built into destiny to be able to do that. But what I've, what I've realized is that this is not consistent throughout the county. And so I think that that's one of the pieces that we are missing, as well as the consistency across the county with making parents aware that they do have this option, even if it is not specifically challenged, but they can go in and speak and say, you know, I don't want my child to have access to this. So we do need to, to vet those things as well, moving forward. But at this point, those are, those are my biggest issues with it. But as a whole, I think that we did a tremendous job as a committee coming up with these policies. But as a whole, I think that we did a tremendous job as a committee coming up with these policies.
So I'm just going to recap, just for the three of you, with Ms. Adcock being okay, with you and Ms. Carpenter both having issues about, having a discussion about pulling some, a book, material, whatever, immediately, the form with it not being anonymous, there not being an opportunity to make it anonymous, and to have further discussion about the parental section. Okay, all right, moving down to Mr. Fur. Comments or questions?
I'll just save time, and, because I agree with, with both Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Blackwell. So you can throw mine, and, and with theirs, that's fine.
Anything additional, or that's?
That's pretty much it. But Rob's got us a solution.
Mr. Walter.
Well, thanks, Tim. I think if our goal was to improve this policy, make it better, I think we've done that. But there's, in my opinion, if our goal was to prevent, to be proactive, I don't think, I, I think we lack there. I think we need to, to add something to it as well. I don't think it addresses the issue where our outside vendors are bringing things in and selling things to our kids that could be inappropriate. What I would like, what I would like to see is taking the wording that's existing in policy, policy number, sorry, 3226, and incorporating that and wording it slightly differently, but where it says, "The board has determined that audio and visual materials that depict violence, nudity, graphic language that does not serve a legitimate parag, excuse me, how do I pronounce that word? Paragological purpose are inappropriate for minors. The superintendent, in conjunction with the school technology and media advisory committee, shall make a determination regarding what other material or materials are inappropriate for minors. The school system personnel may not, may not restrict, well, the student, and it also has a section in here that says, "A student or employee must immediately notify the appropriate school official if a student or employee believes that he wa," and here, here it is, a website or web content, but it could be a book or whatever, but, "that is available to students through the school systems is obscene, constitutes child pornography, or is hateful of minor, harmful to minors as defined by CIPA, or is otherwise inappropriate for students. And then students must notify a teacher, principal, employees must notify the superintendent when that occurs." I think that language should be in here somewhere. And those, that's my addition to it.
Okay, Ms. Sandage.
I'm concerned that we're spending so much time on this policy. That's one. I believe that we have a process in place for policies, and I'm not sure that we're using that. So this committee that's been charged with looking at this policy has given us a recommendation. Am I not right in thinking that that should next go to the policy committee to look over and to vet and to do all of that stuff, and then it should come to this board from their recommendations? Did we miss a step somewhere?
No, we did not miss a step, and I'll take that, because going to the policy committee, this really needed to have work first. So this literature committee, just like your committee that was created to address some of the issues that you've been placed on as chair, this is what needed to take place. If the policy committee gets this, they work on hundreds of policies at a time. So it's better for us to tweak, modify, make, make the recommendations. And if we can do one of two things tonight, we can send it back to our literature committee, or we can send it on to the policy committee, just knowing that they've not worked with this. So that may take a little bit longer than sending it back to the literature committee, because there are several in the audience here, and having them to address these four. So we have done a good job in narrowing down some of the process problems. It appears board members aren't completely satisfied, but the question to me is, right now, do we send it back to the literature committee, or do we send it on to the policy committee, which would take a little bit longer time to vet?
So this policy has already been approved. Now we're making changes to this policy. I understand that correctly, right? I just feel like, again, and I'm going to say this, and I'm going to let it go, we're spending way too much time on this policy, and there are other bigger fish that we need to be frying, in my opinion. So I'll, I'll leave it there.
So board members, I will ask for consensus on whether we send this back to the literature committee, or we send it on to the policy committee, and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I'm good with it going back to the committee and not to the policy committee at this point, if people have concerns about it. My only concern is, is that we voted on it as a committee, and now we're saying that we're not going to look at that vote. So it's just, it's very confusing, I think, to the public what we've done with this.
Ms. Carpenter.
Last time, didn't we not send it to the policy committee?
No, we sent it to the literature committee.
I mean, the more eyes, personally, I like the more eyes that look at it. And some of the people that are on that committee are actually on the policy committee themselves. And, and the policy committee, as, as we mentioned, they go through a lot of policies.
So it's the pleasure of the board. This is what we're doing, if literature committee or policy committee.
Personally, I would like it to go through the policy committee, because when, at our meeting, some of the individuals that's on the policy committee, they mentioned about the procedures we go through. And I think some good input could come from the policy committee. So personally, I'd like it to go to the policy committee. That's just me first.
No, that's great. All right, Ms. Blackwell, policy or literature?
So I, I just want to say that I, I find these policies first to be extremely important. I don't dismiss them at all. I think this is an important discussion that we need to be having, and we need to get this right, and not do this in a short amount of time, but do it correctly. So that being said, I think that at this point, it has gone to the review, or the literature and supplemental material committee for their review. I think part of the, the issues that we have right now are going to be issues that we, as a board, are going to have to make changes to. We can certainly take it back to either the policy committee or the, the literature committee. But I truly believe, listening to, after having these conversations in this committee meeting, and the hours that we have spent on this, some of this is just going to have to be decided by us as a board, and I believe that that's partly what we were hired to do, is to make some of these tough decisions. So at this point, I, I will let it be the pleasure of the board as far as where they think that this needs to go, but in my honest opinion, I think that these are all things at this point, as a board, we need to decide.
Okay, so are you going to give me a vote on literature or policy, and then we can, we can discuss that as soon as we do?
If, if it's between those two, I would rather see it probably go to the policy committee at this point, because like I said, I think at, at this point, we need to have, have their eyes on it.
Okay, Mr. Fur.
I think it needs to go to the policy committee, and ultimately, it's our job to vote on it. And that's what we were elected to do. Doesn't matter how tough it is or controversial it is, it's our decision.
Okay, so let me call it there, because there's definitely plenty to send it back to the policy committee. Do we feel like, as the board, we can answer these four, because evidently, we're not going to be able to put it to a vote tonight with the four issues that the board members have? Do you feel like this is something we can have as a discussion, and we can do this ourselves, or just send it back to the policy committee for a recommendation?
I personally would like to see what policy, now, they may come back and say, "Hey, we don't see anything wrong with it," but tell them what we, what we've said tonight, and let them look at it and see what their recommendation is.
So what I'm telling you is, there's three of you, and probably four, that says that they agree that pulling something immediately, the form, having some type of anonymous verbiage, a parental section being discussed, and outside vendors, there's nothing in here, in this policy that addresses any of that. So we can't do anything on this tonight, and we can't do it Monday night unless we decide to take that on, or we send it back to the policy committee, because that's what you, the majority have said, and have the recommendations, unless you see something different, Mr. White.
If, if I could have some consensus about those four topics, I can work on the language to address the consensus of the board, and send it to the, send it to everybody, and then y'all can vote on it for Monday night for, for approval. Or at least we get some consensus, and then the policy committee would know more guidance as to what the board's looking for. So I think either help us give some, get some guidance as to these four topics for a vote next Monday night, or get some consensus as about these four topics, so the policy committee can get an idea about sort of what the board may be looking at in regards to the language.
Dr. Kepke.
So I hear what you're saying, but I don't think it's reasonable to assume I can get the policy committee together between now and next Monday night, and put them together and have them rehash all that. I hear what you're saying, so, so I'll be clear with the board, sending it back to the policy committee is probably a good step, but you have to allow for some time for that to take place. And Mr. White, you can make your recommendations and your additions or deletions, or maybe have them review that, but I don't think that coming back next Monday with the recommendation would be, would be feasible.
No, no, I'm sorry if I was, I was verbose or not clear. I was not thinking that the policy committee would meet between now and Monday. If this board is ready to make a decision based upon a consensus and the language, then next Monday could be the decision. Or the board can say, "I see what you're going with this. I'm still not comfortable. It needs to go to the policy." I'm not saying policy needs to meet, it's just, just give me some consensus on these four topics, and I can come up with some language, either for the policy committee to meet between now and November, or present it to y'all on Monday night, and you say, "No, it still needs to go to policy." That, that's what I'm saying.
So what I'm going to say is, that's going to be a hard lift tonight.
Okay.
To get everybody here to agree on verbiage. That's why it's best when you have this kind of hard work to do, this, to have a committee in place that kind of vet all that, which is what they clearly did. So I'm going to ask you one more time, if it's the policy committee, and Ms. Burns, when, do you know when the next meeting of the policy committee is?
I don't think she was expected to be here tonight.
All right. I'm not sure what that actual date is. Carolyn, you're on the policy committee.
Jonathan's looking into it.
Okay, who's on the policy committee on this board?
It'll be next week, probably. What do we have? I think it's, my, well, it's on my phone, but I have my phone now, but.
October 20th. We have it, sir, October the 20th.
20th, something. But two, if he could have something, maybe with these corrections or what we talked about, maybe something ready for the policy committee with what we talked about.
I think from what I've heard y'all say, is you want to have something to look at that it can be immediately pulled, that there can be an anonymous petitioner, and, and something about the parental section. And then Mr. Walter was mentioning something about 30, not something, you were mentioning about 3226, trying to pull that in.
Yeah, takes excerpts from an existing policy and include in this.
Yes, sir. So what I will do is.
And then, Mr. White, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the outside vendors.
Are the outside vendors?
Yes.
I will, listening to that, then what I will do is, is craft it, and if you don't mind, I will individually talk to Mr. Walter to make certain that what he expressed, I got correctly. And I think I got the other things pretty, pretty much on board.
So tell me what you're, you're going to craft some verbiage to tweak the?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to work on verbiage with those to input, to see what it looks like, confirm with Mr. Walter that what he, what I've heard him say is what he meant, or what I, what I remembered. And then I will get that out, that'll be ready for the policy committee to be discussed on October the 20th.
Yes.
And then it could be coming before this board in November.
So I would like to ask, Dr. Kepke, if once Mr. White does that, if you will vet this with your principals? Because we have several principals that sit on that committee, and I think that would be a really good idea, just to make sure that they have some input as well.
That's reasonable. And Mr. Walter, you're, you're checking 3226, Section C, the access to inappropriate material? If I'm referencing that accurately?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I just, we just wondered, and I just wondered, I know that in our policy, the Americans Library Association Library Bill of Rights, is that law that that must be in there?
No, ma'am.
It is not law.
No, ma'am. That is the, that is a historical perspective of what this board has passed in, has used in the past. So it does not have to be in there, but that is.
So that is not law that we have to have that in there, then?
I'd have to check. I know it was mentioned in the committee meeting that it was law. I need to confirm that.
Will you check that out, because somebody said, "Oh, that's law that we have to have that in there."
And what I will do is, I will get that information back to Madam Chair, and she can dispense that information.
Would you do that, because somebody said it was law that we had to have that in there? So please check that out.
Yes, ma'am.
So Jay, just for time is of the essence on this, do you think that you would be able to create some verbiage to get to the board this, this week, to look at for next week, and then we could table this after that, if there's not enough?
May I have a moment?
Okay.
So we do need to have time for the public to review whatever we come up with and express their comments before we vote, or at least that. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir. I should be able to get that worked out for y'all.
Okay.
And, and please understand, it will be, I will do the best I can to encapsulate what y'all discussed tonight.
That's okay. So we just have to, we have to, with that being the majority of the board having some issues with that, it's just best that we start somewhere.
Yes, ma'am.
Get that somewhat, and it will be on board docs, and it will be advertised, like we always do, so the public will see it. Do you think you can have that ready for, we advertise on Thursday? Do you think we can?
I will do my best.
Get it out to the board members? Okay, all right.
I have a question. So this was voted on by that committee to come to us before it came to us? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
And, well, I don't know what that vote looks like. Is it like 35 to 10? I mean, I, what?
I would.
14 to 3.
Okay.
Okay, and that was from, in that, the folks that attended that meeting at that point in time? And who were the, what is the three, the descending votes? Was that the board members that are on that committee?
No, ma'am.
No, so the board members agreed with this policy before it came to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, I didn't vote.
Yes.
Okay, if you can just.
I will do that. I'll start working.
Work on that for us, get some drafts out, and even if you get it out quicker, sooner, if you're able to do that right. Then we can get it listed on board docs when we advertise the agenda for the business meeting. Okay, board members, does that pretty much summarize everything for that policy? Okay. All right, we're going to move to 6.03, and I just need consensus that we list Carolyn Carpenter, Denise Adcock, Rob Walter, and Keisha Sandage as our delegates for the 2022 Annual Conference, with Laura Blackwell being an alternate, and also Tim Fur. Board members, is everyone okay with that? If I do the submittal and sign for that?
Yeah.
Everybody good? Okay, I will put that on the consent agenda. And, let's see, so that ends our agenda for our work session, unless there's other comments or questions from board members. Hearing none, may I have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811a3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811a6. Does that move? I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. That concludes our work session. We will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we will see you next Monday on the, gosh, what is that? The 10th for our business session. Thank you and goodnight.